We'll have the call to order. Welcome to the Bossier City Regular Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, March the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. It is three oh-two. We'll start with the invocation by Councilmember Jeffrey Darby, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember David Montgomery, Jr.
Holy Father, thank you for this time that you allowed us to see. Thank you, Lord, for rest on last night. We thank you for all those who are here. We pray for them. We pray for their family members, near and distant. We thank you, Lord, for the recovery of Attorney Jacob. Lord, continue to bless him and keep him safe. Bless his family. Father, we ask that you protect those who serve others. And, Lord, be pleased with what we do today in this meeting. I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please face our flag and join me in our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, real call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
In accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules and Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal impersonance or slanderous remarks who shall become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith by the President Perpetuum, barred from further audience before the council unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the council. Our remarks shall be addressed to the council as the body and not to any member thereof. No question shall be asked a councilperson or the mayor except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. City Council has appointed the city marshals as sergeant-at-arms, and they have been instructed to maintain decorum. Ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting.
All right, any last-minute ceremonial guest recognition of guests? Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, council, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four Regular Council Meeting. In defense with a reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Unfinished business?
Adopting ordinance to allocate forty thousand from the Streets and Drainage Fund to contract the Nixon Engineering Solution to provide design services for Viking Drive Drainage Improvement. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to amend ordinance forty-eight of two thousand and twenty-three and an additional hundred thousand from the Riverboat Gaming Capital Fund for left turn lane on U.S. seventy-one at Golden Meadows. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to contract the Beast Engineering to provide design services for the two thousand and twenty-four citywide street improvement project. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance amending the two thousand and twenty-four Streets and Drainage Fund budget by one hundred thousand to increase the capital street improvement project to approve change order number one for the two thousand and twenty-three citywide street improvement project with an increase of one hundred four thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and thirty-eight cents for the total contract price of one million, five hundred, seventy-six thousand dollars and seven hundred, eighty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance for public utilities to fill a senior operating position, backfill any vacant position this creates, eliminate a vacant operator position, and increase the salaries for all water treatment division employees using the salary surplus available for staffing adjustments resulting in a net neutral change to the two thousand and twenty-four Water Fund operating budget. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance recognizing the Bossier City Engineering Department drone surplus to the needs of the city of Bossier. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to approve report of change order two for the Tinsley Park Ballpark Park and Lot Expansion Phase One and Two with an increase in project cost of forty-two thousand, thirteen dollars and forty cents. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to contract with Silva Design Group LLC to provide design services for a turn lane located at the intersection at Louisiana Highway Three, Ben Road, and China Berry Drive. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio, answer man. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Darby?
Yes.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to declare the completion of the Ben Water Tank Rehabilitation and Pain Project by VIP Tanks LLC, including change order number one in the amount of two thousand, fifty dollars, leaving a surplus of funding to supplement the Water Capital and Continency Fund. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to contract with Mancheck Consulting Group to provide design services for the rehabilitation of Brownlee Park. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
New business.
Adopting ordinance approving a conditional use approval for the retail sale of high and low content alcohol for off-premise consumption at proposed liquor store located at five-five-two-zero, Shet Road, Bossier City, Louisiana. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, I do. Let me just ask you, probably the best to... Is this a liquor store or a coffee shop? Because I see where they want to be open twenty-four hours a day.
It's a multi-tenant center, and the alcohol is just for the liquor store. The property owner or the proposed property owner stated that he would not be open twenty-four hours. He would only be open market dictated, so maybe no later than ten or eleven P.M.
So the coffee shop will be a separate business?
It will be separated, correct. And it will have a drive-through, but the alcohol will not, the liquor store will not.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Additional questions from the council? All right. Please cast your vote. We need... Got it.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a laborer, one due to resignation in the customer service department. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a count clerk, two, due to the resignation in the customer service department. Final read.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Hammond. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of four men in public utilities for water distribution division due to resignation, backfilling any vacancy this may create. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Recommend for approval the joint appointment of Mel Allen to the E nine-one-one Board Appointments effective March first, two thousand and twenty-four through March first, two thousand and twenty-eight.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Is Mr. Allen here?
Mr. Allen is here. Would you like to come up, sir, and introduce yourself?
Good afternoon, everyone. I've been in the parish since eighty-two.
Give us your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Mel Allen. I live at two hundred Jesse Jones Drive in Benton, seven-one-zero-zero-six. I've been a resident of Bossier City and Bossier Parish since nineteen eighty-two. My family have all pretty much been here since that time. I've been with the Sheriff's Department for twenty-nine years after retiring from the bail system, volunteering with a posse member. And I've met Vince several times, I'm sure. And David, if you got any questions, may I be happy to... My background, of course, is with the bail system and communications. So I've got over thirty years' experience in communications.
Any questions, councilman?
Thanks very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen.
Motion carries. Angela Williamson, Finance Director, Monthly Financial Report.
Good afternoon, council. You have before ye the financials for the month ended February twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Page one is revenue by fund. The city is currently twenty-three percent over budget. The decrease in Riverbake Capital Fund revenue is due to a decrease in gaming revenue compared to February twenty-twenty-three. The increase in Water Sewer EMS and Public Service and Sanitation Fund revenue is due to four cycles spilled February twenty-twenty-four and three cycles spilled February twenty-twenty-three. Normally, four cycles are billed each month, but due to the timing, the fourth billing fell on March first prior year. Page two is expenses by fund. The city is currently sixteen percent under budget. The majority of the increase in water fund expenses is due to increases in chemicals, electricity, equipment maintenance contracts, and equipment repair and maintenance for the water treatment plant. The majority of the increase in the Public Service and Sanitation Fund expenses is due to an increase in the right-of-way spraying for the street sweeping and grass-cutting department, which was performed in April prior year. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. Sales tax revenue is down one percent compared to February twenty-twenty-three. Page four is the Manning Report. There are six less full-time employees than last month, and full-time employees are fifty-one under budget. There's one less part-time employee than last month, and part-time employees are eight under budget. Page five is the Water and Sewer Utility Report. Net operating income after debt service for February twenty-twenty-four has increased significantly compared to prior year. Current year-to-date income has decreased two hundred percent from prior year and is forty-three percent over budget. And on a rolling twelve-month basis, net operating income is up nineteen percent. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Engineering Department Monthly Project Report.
Good afternoon, council. General overview has been massaged a little bit. We've had some projects move out of the design bid phase and into construction, but the overall ongoing design and construction remains at around eighty-eight million. Walro B.B. Carriage Way, we're sitting at around eighty-eight percent complete with eighty-six percent of the time elapsed. They're about eight days ahead of schedule, and that's been fluctuating over the last month or two. You can see, if you're driving north of town, they're getting close to Benton Road, working on the pavement there. I've talked to the team that's managing this project and indicated that if there are panels on and adjacent to where we tie into Benton Road right there, if you travel up and down, you know that there's portions of Benton Road that are in disrepair. To go ahead and take those panels out and replace them with new panels while they're there, it's kind of one of those while they're there. They've done that in a couple of other sections, and the pricing for that's very reasonable. So I've instructed them to do that, just to at least get that portion as cleaned up as possible.
Ben, when do you think completion, an estimated completion date?
It's hard to estimate, but we were targeting June. It's probably going to be June, July. Because when I say it's hard to estimate, they're contracts on a working day, so they only get assigned... If they can't work, you know, if it's not a calendar day, if they can't work, then that day just goes up in smoke, but they're not penalized for that. So it's weather-dependent. But I would say comfortably July, hopefully before that, but comfortably July. If you've driven through there, you can... They're cleaning up.
Yeah.
The section on Hamilton Road is similar, Councilman Hammond's. So south of Highway eighty, you've noticed Hamilton Road's closed down, and it looks like a war zone there. That was another area where we said that Hamilton Road is bad, and while we're there, let's clean up, you know? I don't know, a couple hundred feet of that and get that s-licked up while we're at it. So again, I'm moving with an abundance of caution there, but I feel like those are... I think we're all like-minded as it relates to doing those improvements, so... Yes, sir.
So are you through?
Oh, yeah, I'm done.
On Hamilton Road, I know, I don't know if it's still closed down, but down, when you get to the underpass, there are some panels that look like...
They're bad.
They're disintegrated. I mean, can we go ahead? I know that's an extension, but I mean, Hamilton Road's going to become a lot more used once the roundabout opens and the Carriageway, and I mean, literally, some of those panels for those that use them as a cut through.
It's bad. No, I...
I'm just saying, since you're doing it, it can't be that much, and let's go ahead and get it. That way, traffic...
No, I mean, these are big, heavy panels, and like one panel on Benton Road, I think they were somewhere south of five grand, and that's a pretty good price. It seems it's a lot of money, but for thick pavement, heavy highway pavement, that's a good price. It's a great idea. We spent some money here recently. I say "we," the city leveraged some grant funds that we got through the state to do some work on Hamilton Road that made it better, but that might lick the whole thing, at least in the short term, because there's not many... I mean, you could pave the whole world there, but there are some that are...
Well, there's just a couple of areas, I mean, that...
Yeah.
Looks like cobblestone rather than concrete.
Drove through there today.
Yeah, it's where Wade had already fixed a couple of, or put a Band-Aid on them.
Just kind of north of there.
Yeah, just a little north of there. It's from when they were working on that trestle right there that they did. They tore up a lot of the concrete.
We'll add that to their to-do list, but they're literally right in there hauling in materials and everything as we speak right now. So that makes a lot of sense to get that done. Okay, Tinsley Park Parking, you guys just approved the final close-out change order for that. There's a little bit of work there. As far as the original contract, they're done. I just put them at ninety-five percent because there's, I don't know, forty-some odd thousand dollars worth of work that we'll have them do in addition to this and then close the books on Tinsley. Tinsley dugouts, they're a hundred percent complete. This will be the last slide. They end up being a couple days behind, and we've got a couple punchless warranty items, but turned out nice that the project's done. The municipal fire station and parking lot lighting, this project is also complete. This will be the last time I show this slide that they're complete. And if you haven't noticed, look at the parking lot lighting out there. You can kind of see the head looks a little different. Looks nice at night. Municipal complex security upgrades, the biggest update for y'all is that work will begin right out here starting April tenth. So we have a council meeting April ninth, next two weeks from now, and they'll begin demoing on April tenth.
They'll be done before the next council meeting.
The following council meeting will be the worst of all the council, of all the meetings. They'll be the most destroyed out here. The contract time puts them to be complete in early December. We expect them to beat that, but I don't want to publish that, but...
Is that going to be closed off out there? Are we going to park over there or what?
Sir?
Is that going to be closed off out there?
Yes, sir. So this will no longer be a, you know, in-and-out entrance. They'll be coming off the Beckett Street entrance for public to come in and out, and we'll provide temporary access into these chambers when we need to. And the contractor's got a great schedule. They blocked out, like on a council day or on an NPC day, they will not be working. So they've got a pretty good plan.
At the end of the day, we still, though, will have access here?
Yes, sir. Like, you won't be able to come from that parking lot in here, though. You'll have to come from the Beckett Street entrance, if that makes sense. Yes, sir.
Y'all all good with that?
During, just during construction?
While it's under construction.
Yeah, while it's under construction, okay.
Because one of y'all is going to trip on a rock or a piece of steel. I don't know about this special entrance you guys come into, but you can come in through this side. You just won't be able to come through this door. So you'll be able to park out there and walk around and come through whatever over here is.
I just want to feel safe, Ben, okay?
David, when we park over, I'll hold your hand. We'll draw a corner in, okay?
All right, thanks. That's all I was wanting, somebody to step up and be my wingman, all right?
Probably Chris is the problem, isn't he?
What's that?
You're probably the problem.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
This is the street program. It's coming along nicely. They're about sixty percent complete, way ahead of schedule, around sixty days ahead of time, probably be done by our next meeting. But that project is moving along very good. Airline Drive Overlay, that's it today. So outside of striping, it's done. I think they started yesterday and they completed it today. We're pretty proud of that. They're sixty-five days ahead. Note that we do have some work happening at the signal, and because of equipment delays, that work will happen when we get the equipment. We have a box that we're planning to lend out here to kind of modernize that signal. I'm talking about Wimpel and Airline, but we won't be able to wrap all that up until that portion's complete. So it'll look like the project's done, but there'll still be a little bit to do that's going to trail when we can get that equipment, but...
How far south is that coming?
Sir?
How far south?
So that's the southern... That is not the southern tip. The southern tip, right where the concrete is, so trying to get a bearing on where that would be. But it's, you know, when you're traveling north on Airline, it goes from concrete to asphalt, and that's where we started. And then it goes all the way up to where the sign is. It says, "Parish Maintenance Begins Here." And we'll have a little bit of reconciliatory change order on this one with some pavement. We did some base repairs and things like that through there, but fortunately, that wasn't very disruptive. I mean, it was very disruptive when it was starting, but it didn't last that long, so that was nice. Bean Boulevard Bridge, refresh. Just to give you an idea, they're getting close. I got them about eighty-five percent complete. This was a little action shot. They still got to paint the railings, and we're going to freshen up the lighting on there, but you can kind of see what it was and what we're doing with it now. Wahlburg Park Building, just wanted you guys to know that we've looked at this project. I've sat down with the architect. We're over budget by about seventy thousand. We've come up with around forty thousand of potential cuts before you start making the building smaller. And even doing that, we would still have to put the project back out on the street for rebid, so I'm kind of letting you know where we're at. I don't know what the pleasure of the council is there, but I'm not able to get it whittled down enough to put it within the available funds that we have currently for construction. Traffic Signal Upgrade, just wanted to give you all an update on this. It is ongoing. We have somewhere around twenty-five signals that have the new equipment. It hasn't been energized yet. I've put in green there. It's forty days behind schedule, but it's... When I say that, that schedule's kind of loose. We just got most of the equipment early this year. We're projecting that project to be done by June, and so I'm kind of following the contract amount and the June end date and when the PO is issued to come up with that number. But it'll be something that's... It's a big project. It's just... But it'll be something that's, it's a big project. It's just not something sexy, but for us, that's going to be a game changer.
And what's it going to do?
That will allow us to remotely monitor all of our signals, so we'll know when we have a power outage. We'll know what's going on with those signals. It'll bring everything up from literally having to plug your Atari into it and, you know, punch in code to having a modern signalization system using state-of-the-art software and technology.
Yeah, and when that goes down, what do you do?
Well...
Bean goes out there and...
Yeah, I know. It will default. I mean, it'll default into...
I like that, default. Y'all remember that term, okay?
So it uses, this system will use the city mesh, so the same mesh that we use for our SCADA systems, the same mesh that we use, the cops use for all their stuff, it all dovetails together.
So, and the traffic just flows perfectly. It just really does.
So will this, that red light talk to the red light on the other side of the bridge when this one is green and you go right over the bridge and hit a red light?
Yeah.
It's not going to...
Believe it or not, they already do that. That part they already do.
I think they must be in a fight because they're not talking to each other.
The problem is, is you're going too fast over the bridge.
Oh, and I'm driving too fast.
You're not driving the speed limit, and so you're getting to the other side of the bridge, and it's still red. So I appreciate your urgency there. I struggle with that, too. I promise you, we, traffic engineering, not in the frog in their pocket, they work real hard on playing with the signals. We've spent a lot of time, truthfully, just on Highway eighty with I twenty being down. And so we will have some ability to do work remotely, but one of the primary features, in my opinion, of this would be when we have a power outage, we don't know it. Like, I don't know if the signal's without power. There's no alarm until someone calls it in or the cops are there. We have no idea. If we wanted to set up standby power at signals, we don't know which ones are out, which ones are working unless we literally drive to all of them. And so this gives us full visibility on that and allows us to plan attack, you know, for things like that, so it's long overdue.
So when one goes down, will that notify?
It will.
Police dispatch before y'all, or will it go to y'all and then y'all notify?
That part I don't know. We could probably, I don't know. I don't want to lie. That part I don't know, but I know it'll notify traffic engineering. And, you know, I mean, when they go down, you know, they go into a blinking yellow scenario or blinking red depending on the intersection, but they're just very hands-on. If you're aware of it, more often than not, you'll see crews out with the cabinets open and they're plugged in there looking at it. That, you know, we want to help tamp some of that down. I think there might be one computer in the entire city that we can actually use to get into these cabinets. I mean, it's that old. They don't support latest Windows software and things like that. Private Development, no new change here. These are just freshened-up pictures. Got a little issue going on at the Rocket Fast. They're open, but they did not stripe that portion of the street there. That's a city street, and they didn't use what we specify, thermoplastic striping, and they didn't do it properly. We understand that's going to be taken care of in the next week or two, but we'll make sure that gets done before we accept that street into the city's O. and M. Projects in design are out for bid. A lot of these, you guys, just thank you very much for helping me bring some resources in. We'll be pushing many of these forward here shortly. I did want to highlight Carriage Oaks, the drainage improvements there. I had a meeting out in the rain last week. We've got a good feel for what it is. We feel like it needs to be done there, and I'll be coming to the council with a proposal on that. There was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated in this year's budget to do some work there, and we've got a good plan for that. Council on Aging is another one that's probably worth mentioning. I've had a couple meetings. Councilman Smith and Councilman Williams were at one of the meetings today where we're working to build some steam behind that project. We're still, I don't know, not, we've got a plan to communicate with the police jury on some buy-in there. We want to flesh that out. I don't know if y'all know, I set the next, it was the first week of May is when we'll meet again on that, but I've had a good meeting today. I felt like it was very productive. Any other projects? I added one on here, Municipal Complex Chiller Replacement. Steve Ford came to me. We've replaced two in the past, and we still have one that needs work. Those things are expensive. They got to be bid out. The EMA Engineering did the last couple of projects up there, so they're very familiar with that, so I want to get them on contract. You'll see an ordinance for them to do that in two weeks, but we want to get them on contract and get that going. It's huge. It's as big as a, you know, train sitting up there on the roof. These are big systems, but it may be a year before we can get that equipment here on site. All right. Thank you all.
Any announcements, counsel? Happy Easter to everyone and those that are enjoying this Friday. All of you, everybody. Not me. Happy Easter to you. Meeting adjourned.